Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, invited guests, city staff and our friends and family that are with us today. I want to welcome you to the meeting of the Portsmouth City Council. Also, I want to welcome my colleagues on council as well as our city manager, Mr. Carter, our city attorney, Attorney Lavonda Graham-Williams, and our city clerk, Ms. Deborah White. Thank you all for being here tonight. And with that, I will call to meet in the order. I would ask at this moment if everyone could please stand for a moment of silence, followed by our pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I will now ask my colleagues to please note your attendance electronically.
Five members of council present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We now have the minutes of a call meeting October 8th, 2024, and a regular meeting October 8th, 2024. Do we have a motion and second to approve the minutes?
Move with adoption.
Second.
I would ask that my colleagues please vote electronically.
The minutes are adopted five zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can you please read the council rules?
Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now come to the item on our agenda, public hearing, item 24-308. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item?
Yes, sir. Public hearing with respect to the proposed adoption by city council of resolutions requesting that the General Assembly amend the present city charter.
Thank you, ma'am. And we do have a registered speaker for this public hearing item, and that registered speaker is Mr. Mark Godalde Yatrowski. Sir, if you will come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and other neighbors. So, as I said to you recently in this chamber, the General Assembly provides more than one way for the citizens to participate in the formulation of charter amendments. The first way listed in the Code of Virginia is by an election. And I continue to maintain that the appropriate way for you to be seeking public input on the four items that are scrunched together in this one agenda item is by a referendum. However, that fell on deaf ears when I presented it the last time, and I assume that it's going to go forward in the current form. So, since you have four items wrapped together, I'm going to ask for 20 minutes to address each item in a five-minute timeframe.
Sir, you have five minutes.
You know my sentiments on that because I wrote to you yesterday, and I assume that you read your email messages. I know the clerk delivers them to you all. So, items one and two of the four are non-starters for me. Let's start with number two. You have proposed, or there is a proposal to reduce the penalties for interference with the city manager in appointments, hiring, and firing of subordinates to a meaningless fine of $100, where the current language includes criminal penalties, removal from office, and a more substantial fine. I believe $100 fine is meaningless, especially when in six months from the first of the year, the council salaries will be doubling. It'll even be smaller in terms of the effect. As a fellow citizen wrote to you, you're essentially taking away the disincentive to interfere and creating an incentive to interfere. And I believe that's well above your pay grade, even at the higher levels that are coming in July. Okay, going back to the first item, second, there seems to be an opinion that having to collect 9,000 signatures to start a recall process, have those signatures go before a judge who refers those signatures to the registrar for validation, and if, and 9,000 is approximation, but it's in the ballpark, and if there are sufficient number of signatures, then there's an election in which the question of retaining the council members subject to recall is decided. Somebody evidently thinks that is an arduous enough a process. So, now, your proposal is to add a whole bunch of legal intervention in and around the collection of signatures. Seriously? With two recalls in the past century, and I'm not going to go back to 1752 because recall was a process that came out in the era of the progressives, so we'll go back 100 years. I think two recalls in the last 100 years demonstrates that the current process is arduous enough. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, this item is a public hearing item. If you would like to speak on this particular item, you are not required to have signed up to come up and speak. If you wish to speak on this public hearing item, you will have five minutes, and it must be germane to the public hearing item. Any speakers at this time? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Now, we will move on to our next item, which is city manager's report, item 24-309. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering with this item?
An ordinance, one, accepting a preservation trust fund grant in the amount of $376,247.25 from the Virginia Outdoors Foundation and appropriating said amount in the FY 2025 Grants Fund for the purpose of renovating Maplewood Park located at 3235 Portsmouth Boulevard, and two, authorizing the commands of a permanent easement in favor of the Virginia Outdoors Foundation or its designated encumbering approximately 1.80 acres of open space at 3235 Portsmouth Boulevard in compliance with the requirements of the Virginia Code Section 10.1-1801.1 and Virginia Code Section 10.1-1700.
Madam Clerk, as a point of clarification, both of those items are included in this particular roll call? I mean, we don't do them separately?
No, it's one item.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you, ma'am. We're in need of a motion and a second.
Move with adoption.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted five zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item, 24-310. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
An ordinance accepting a bulletproof vest partnership grant in the amount of $25,777.26 from the Department of Justice Bureau and Justice Assistance and appropriating said funds in the FY 2025 Grants Fund for use by the Police Department, $21,332.90, and the Sheriff's Office, $4,444.36, to acquire bulletproof vests.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move with adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted five zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 24-311. Would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance amending and reorganizing Section 6-2 and 6-7 of Article 1 of Chapter 6, Boats and Waterways of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, for the purpose of strengthening the remedies available to address abandoned and/or illegally mowed watercraft.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move with adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Councilman Hubel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that we are aiming to tighten things up with our derelict boat issue. Mr. City Manager, I guess my question to you is, I understand from a discussion with the police chief that our waterways enforcement group is a collateral duty, so they're only stood up part-time when the need arises. I would ask if it's the pleasure of my colleagues to have to go take a look at how are we going to enforce whatever ordinance is on the books? I mean, I certainly support tightening things up, but it won't do any good to tighten things up if we're not out there actually enforcing the rules that we have.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Mr. Carter. I would ask that my colleagues please vote electronically.
This item is adopted five zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 24-312. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance to reappropriate unexpendable funds in the amount of $19,025,447 from the FY 2024 Portsmouth Public Schools General Fund Budget to the FY 2025 Portsmouth Public Schools General Fund Budget.
Thank you, ma'am. And we do have a number of registered speakers for this item. Our first speaker is Ms. Laura Hamilton. Ms. Hamilton, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, members of city council. My name is Laura Hamilton, and I stand before you today as the president of Portsmouth Education Association, representing the dedicated educators who serve the children and families of our community every day. I am here to address a matter of urgency and fairness, the release of the retention bonuses that have been promised to us. Our educators have worked tirelessly, often going above and beyond what is required to ensure that our students receive the best possible education despite numerous challenges. These bonuses were intended to acknowledge and reward that dedication, yet we find ourselves in a situation where these funds are at risk or are being delayed. Delaying the release of these bonuses sends the wrong message to our educators, the very people who keep our families running and our students learning. We have upheld our commitment to the community, and now we're asking city council to uphold theirs. These retention bonuses are not just a monetary reward, they are a symbol of appreciation for the countless hours and efforts our teachers, support, staff, and educators invest in our schools. The decision to delay these payments will erode trust and create additional stress for individuals who are already stretched thin in their duties. I respectfully urge that council to prioritize the immediate release of these funds. Our educators should not have to wait any longer for what was promised to them. They have earned these conversations, and they need to see that the City of Portsmouth values their hard work and commitment. This is not just a financial issue, it's about showing our educators that we recognize their value and their central role in the future of Portsmouth. We cannot afford to delay any further. We ask you to honor your commitment and release the retention bonuses without any further delay. Our schools and educators and students and the entire community are counting on you to do the right thing. And one words from my colleague, Ms. Huff, faith without works is dead. We have faith in you to show us your work, so please consider our request for immediate release of our retention bonus. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Ms. Laura Hunter.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak for a moment. I'm a resident of Portsmouth. I was born and raised here, graduated from Churchland High School, not yesterday, but a few days ago, and I'm an educator in Portsmouth in my 19th year. And I'm serving currently as a division-level technology resource teacher. I did move out of the city for a while to go to college, and then I married into the military, and we traveled around a bit, but I earned my teaching credentials in the state of Connecticut. At that time, I chose to move back to Virginia to begin teaching. I actually had an opportunity to teach in another division, but I chose to work for Portsmouth. In 2010, I was honored as the Citywide Teacher of the Year, and I spoke before you at that time as a thank you for all of the accolades that were bestowed upon me then. I chose to stay in my loyalty to the division, though I could have gone to other positions in other fields, in other divisions. Portsmouth, of course, has some challenges, there's no secret in that. However, our teachers are some of the hardest-working, most talented, and determined educators I have ever met, even as I have presented at conferences on the national level and compared notes. I've known other employees who have left the division for a year or two and then returned because their salary was greater. Is that the model that we really need to set for our teachers? Go away for a couple of years and then come on back because you'll make more money? I'm not sure that's what we want to do, to send our best people off to our neighbors. When the retention bonus was announced, it was a great relief as I considered the current cost of my groceries, my basic living expenses, my life expenses. We were given an expected date in November for these bonuses, and it is disheartening to learn that there may be a delay in the release of these funds. So, I urge you now to reward those employees who have also chosen to work here and those that continue to stay year after year. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Ms. Breann Rhodes. Ms. Rhodes, and I apologize if I didn't pronounce your name correctly. If I did not, please correct me.
Hello.
Could you please move the microphone closer to your...
Sure, yes. Hello, my name is Breann Rhodes. I am fairly new to the district. This is now my second year teaching. I was born and raised in northwest Arkansas. Last year, I received a call from my best friend who was hired as a long-term sub, and she said Portsmouth needs teachers. Will you answer the call? I put in my application. Within three minutes, I began getting phone calls. I am here as a provisional licensed teacher. I'm going into my second year. The funds that were promised helped me make the decision. In fact, they cemented my decision to remain with Portsmouth Public Schools Systems. Without those funds being available, it's greatly disheartening to me, and it erodes my trust in this system that is here. I have already, I hate to say this, but I have already been looking at other school districts who are also making promises. I work hard for this district. I stay long hours. We are going into week eight. I have not had a single unencumbered lunch yet with our school. I work at Waterview Elementary. I am only licensed to teach secondary science, yet I have to teach both science and social studies in order to stay there. We have overloaded classrooms. I have 31 students at the beginning of the year. We have enough students that we should qualify for four teachers, and I should not be forced to teach outside of what I am licensed to teach, but I choose to stay. And I knew that coming in because I thought that I would be compensated for that extra time. When I got the email in November, I'm sorry, not in November, in August, saying that the retention bonus was not only less than what I originally expected, but that it was coming much later and now could be delayed again, it is affecting my decisions to continue to stay with this district because I don't feel appreciated at this point. Let's see. I guess that's the point. That's all I really needed to make at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Ms., is it Lynette Hillian? Did I get that wrong?
Lynette Hillian, yes.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lynette Hillian, and I am a technology resource teacher at Brighton Elementary, one of the best schools in Portsmouth. I choose to stay at Brighton because there is a need there. I was not born in Portsmouth. I was raised in a neighboring city, but I choose to stay here. I can't, I've been, this is my 11th year here, and before this, I was at another district. But I answered the call to come here, and I stay here. People are trying to get me from here. People are calling me, and they're saying, "We have positions other places," and I'm fighting them off. I'm fighting them off. I said, "I cannot," because they've promised us that we will receive this retention bonus. I cannot do that. With the education and also the experience I have, I could be somewhere else, and I've compared. I've compared Portsmouth to another district, and I would make $10,000 more, but I'm here. This is where I plan to stay. People talk about Portsmouth. They talk about, you know, the crime and things of that. Okay, crime is everywhere. It is everywhere. But again, I stay here. I don't go anywhere because I love my colleagues, I love the students, and this is a ministry for me. So, I'm just asking that you all reconsider. Don't wait, because let me say what's going to happen, and I know this because I talk to my colleagues throughout the district. They're going to leave. They have said so. They are leaving. I don't know when they're leaving, but if there's a delay, they're leaving. That disheartens me. I mean, it really, we give 125% every day. For seven years, I was a special education teacher, and now I'm a technology and resource teacher. What does that say? It says I have an opportunity to grow in Portsmouth. I may not have that other places, and that your talents and your education is appreciated. And I know what people say. They say it to me all the time. Why are you still in Portsmouth? What do you mean, why am I still in Portsmouth? Because they have a lot to offer. There's time to grow. There's people here I love, my colleagues, on a daily basis, and being at Brighton is not easy. However, when I see those children and that light bulb goes off, there it is. That is my why. That is why I'm here. And in this time that I've been here in Portsmouth, I've had two students, and they don't prepare you for this, when you are receiving your, working towards your license. I've had two students who were killed. They're Portsmouth students. They're in high school, and they were killed. I taught them in elementary, and that was such disheartening to me, and it set me back. It really set me back. They were within a week, they were within a year of each other. But where am I? I am still here. The students need me. I need them. My colleagues need me. Technology, they already know that's my thing. Ms. Hillian does that integration because it's important, and I want Portsmouth to be on top. That's why I do what I do. That's why I go, so we shine bright together. When we go to national, international conferences, local conferences, I proudly wear Portsmouth Public Schools Instructional Technology on my left lapel. I proudly wear that. And to be honest, when we go to these conferences, guess what they say? You all are doing some fantastic things in Portsmouth. Of course we are, because we're shining, and that's what we do. So, please reconsider. Don't, I'm telling you, I promise you, they're going to leave, and they've said so in my conversations with them. They're going, they're leaving. I don't know when, but they will. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Gordon Jones. Mr. Jones, if you will come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, council. My name is Gordon Jones. I reside at 14 Holly Hill Court. Been there all my life, product of Portsmouth Public Schools, and I am a proud 42-year veteran of Portsmouth Education. Why? Because I love Portsmouth. I love this city because somebody once said Portsmouth is for people, all kinds of people, a good place to live, work, and play. And I love working here. I love playing here. I enjoy Portsmouth. Yes, we got our problems, but what city doesn't? But we, we have a school system that is phenomenal. We spend countless hours doing what we can to make our children the best, the brightest, and all we ask is for a little consideration. I don't think it would be hard for you to say, okay, they need those retention bonuses. Why do we have to wait until November, December, January? The money's there. It's there. You know it's there. It shouldn't take forever. That's the problem of old Portsmouth. We've always taken forever to do things, and every time we have an election, we elect people so that we can get fresh new blood and new ideas to generate new things for Portsmouth. And believe me, I'm 61 years old. Portsmouth has come a long way, baby, but we still got a long way to go. And all of these people that are standing with me tonight, all we ask is just let us have our bonus. I started out 42 years ago at $10,275. That was my salary. I can't tell you what step I'm on. I can't tell you, because they can't tell me, because we haven't had a step in so long. Nobody in HR can tell me where I am, because we haven't had one in so long. So, for the last 40-something years, I've felt like it wasn't a step. So for the last forty-seven years, I've felt like it wasn't a step, I've been a rug that people just walk right on top of. But despite that, because of my love for this city and these children and my colleagues, I stayed. Because I am a big child at heart and I tell you, I would do anything in the world for these children in Portsmouth, anything. Even if I have to lay down my life for these children in Portsmouth, I will. Just like my colleagues have, time and time again. But we just want our bonus, that's all, we're not asking for much. Just our bonus and our steps and compensation. I understand you all gave yourself a raise and you should have because you deserve it, you've been working hard. Our city council does work hard. And I commend you for doing that, that was a bold move. But let the education department, let Portsmouth Public Schools join your bold movement. Be bold and give us what we asked for now and not later. Because later is not promised to any of us. And I hate to close my eyes and not getting the just that I deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And if I could, I've heard, I've sat here and my colleagues, we've sat here and listened to all of these impassioned pleas. And I have to say honestly, a number of my colleagues on the dais have conferred with me. And I really think, and I want to ask your permission because we want to show that we value each and every one of you. I think that we should just go ahead and take the vote and be in the affirmative. Now, if you wish to come up and speak on this item, you're certainly available to do that. But we are prepared, we are prepared as a council to, to what my good friend, Mr. Jones, just said. Let's just move on and do what we need to do. And so we're prepared to do that, so if it's okay with everybody, we would like to call for the motion and the second to do this in the affirmative. That way, we don't have to continue and we can let everybody go. We have the consensus to move this forward. Can I get a show of hands of all of my colleagues who are in support of voting in the affirmative on this item? So we're all going to vote for the item. But if you, but what I'm saying is if you choose to speak, that's your choice, but we are going to vote in the affirmative. We've heard you, we acknowledge you, and this was never an issue from what I understand in terms of this body. But if you choose to speak, that's your choice. But we, I want you to know and my colleagues, we are going to vote in the affirmative to move this forward expeditiously. So ma'am, the next speaker is Shayla Pruitt. And anyone after Shayla, if you wish to come and speak, you're certainly entitled to do that.
Good afternoon, good evening. I'm just going to go off script for a second. As an English teacher, I thought we could have a word of the day. So our word of the day is spirited. Spirited is an adjective that means full of energy, enthusiasm, and determination. And that is what we as PPS educators bring to these buildings every day. And I just want to say that it shouldn't have taken three of us to convince you, should have just done it. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Is there anyone else who wishes to come and speak who signed up as a speaker? And your name is ma'am?
Paige Hill.
Okay, Ms. Hill, we have you here listed, so ma'am, you have the floor. Please state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Thank you, my name is Paige Hill. Thank you for allowing me this time to speak, good evening. And I trust that you will be committed to serving in the best interest of the staff at Portsmouth Public School. I'm not a native of Portsmouth, I'm originally from Charlottesville, Virginia. And I'm going to go off a little, off the cuff a little bit because my other people who've come up and spoke, they pretty much have said a lot of what I wanted to say, but there's some other things that need to be said. If you come over to Craddock Elementary, when you walk through the entry, there's a huge banner that we have and that banner says, "Passion, Purpose, Promise, and Portsmouth." And tonight, I'm talking about the promise. Our greatest investment are our children and we know that. In order for our children to function, do well, be able to compete on a local, state, and national, and hopefully global level, you have to have the teachers and the educators there to prepare them. We make a commitment every single day when we walk into that school system and we pour our hearts in it. And most time, we hear, "You know what, you do it from the hearts, you know this is not about the money." And I'm going to say we're going to have to stop saying that because that's a scapegoat that's often said to us when we do not get the compensation that we're deserved. So it's that emotional appeal to make you feel good. But I can't take the feel-good to the grocery store, okay, I can't do that. I'm going to speak specifically about the IAs because I'm an instructional assistant. Right now, I don't know if I may, I don't know if we have any IAs here. But right now, there are fifteen days we do not get paid for, fifteen. And the month of December alone, we take a tremendous hit. So we can't even do what is necessary for our own families. An IA and I invite any of you, please come and follow an IA for a day. And bring your roller skates, okay, because you're going to be moving and grooving all day long. And that is okay, but we, we deserve better, okay, we deserve better. We invest in our children, we have to create what we call a growth mindset. You can ask any of our educators what a growth mindset is. We need you all to develop an investment mindset. Because when you invest in us, you're not going to lose, I tell you that, you will not lose. Invest in us, we got what we need and we are willing, we have done the job. Craddock Elementary, we have a R-ten, R-ten is when you reduce it by ten percent. And if I got a second, I'm going to just, where are my glasses at, hold on here. And this is with a short staff. R-ten and E-L-L-S students, Hispanic. We have a nine-point-six decrease in their failure with students with disciplinary actions, okay? That says something because when our disciplinary drops, guess what, y'all? That means there's going to be less crime in the neighborhood. And that makes Portsmouth a better place to live. All right, let me, hold on, hold on, hold on, what else we got here? We got R-ten for overall achievement and math, R-ten and five out of seven subgroups. I'm just asking you, give us what is due. Now, I hear you say in an expedition manner, "We need a time, okay, we need a date." Okay, we can't hear, "Oh, it's coming," because the coming should have already happened. Because we did the work last year, we did it. You gave our new teachers six thousand dollars, wonderful, we not, we love that, but... They need theirs and that should have been day one. And it should have been with a smile on his face because we are here. Invest in us, do right for us, like you expect us to do right for our children. And you will not, we're not going to fail you. That's all I got to say. But I am going to say this real quickly, because this is one of my favorite quotes. "When all else fails, conditions will unite a people." I'm going to leave you on that note, y'all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you ma'am.
We're going to be looking for those checks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Desaline Perry. Desaline?
I'm here, but I don't need to speak because you have already said expeditiously.
Expeditiously, and that was a deliberate word.
So I am very satisfied and I want to say thank you.
You're welcome ma'am.
For all the teachers that this would happen expeditiously.
Yes ma'am, absolutely. The next speaker, if you wish to come forward, is Tamar Bray Matkins. Good to see you again, Ms. Matkins, you state your name and address ma'am, you will have five minutes.
All right, good evening, Mayor Glover.
Please, please bring the microphone closer to your speaking range, please, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Glover and Vice Mayor Lucas Burke. My name is Tamar Bray Matkins, I am a member of Portsmouth Education Association. The teachers plus support staff appreciate the one-time bonus for November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. However, when promised something special, we get excited about funds set aside for teachers and support staff. We have been very faithful in returning to the city that we love to work. The money was promised to PPS or Portsmouth Public Schools employees and we have made plans to use it wisely. Please honor the one-time request for the funds to be released on November the fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Thank you in advance for your cooperation, Tamar Bray Matkins. May I say this, I am a Portsmouth Public School graduate of IC Norcombe High School. I went to Victory Elementary, which was Holland Bitmore School. I went to Churchland Middle School where I had the opportunity of walking to school and riding the bus with Missy Elliott. I choose to teach in Portsmouth. I live in Great Bridge, but I come through that tunnel every day because my babies are waiting for me at my door. Now, we just happened to change our time from the illustrious school that I work at. We now take in our students at eight-twenty, which has to bring me here and through the tunnel before eight-ten or a little earlier. But I'm fighting every day to get here because this is the system that I love. This is the school system that I grew up in, this is where I was born and raised in. And I choose to make that ride, to come through the tunnel every day. This is my twenty-seventh year in Portsmouth Public Schools. I'm almost near retirement, but I am hoping that you will do right by the teachers that have stood here long, long time, waiting for these raises and bonuses. I do understand that you're trying to get the teachers that are new and, and, I don't know, maybe entice them or just give them praise and have them at the top of the line as far as coming in, working in Portsmouth. But please consider the teachers that have been here long times veterans, long time support staff. And I mean, they give their heart, Gordon Jones, forty-two years. I'm looking at some colleagues of mine that are in the building that are on thirty-four and thirty-seven years. That is a blessing, that is something that they want to do. So please just consider, please consider, and I thank you in advance for your cooperation. Have a nice day.
Thank you ma'am. Manager Carter? Sir, you asked for the floor, and then Councilman Tillage.
Yes, sir. It will be unusual that I speak to anybody that is doing a presentation at our council meetings. But based on the repeated voices that I've heard, it's become apparent to me that you're expecting that we have, this body has something to do with something that we really don't have anything to do with. We got the request for the items that you see on the agenda. We put them on the agenda, we're going to vote on them tonight. That's the end of anything that we can have to do with this. I don't know what information you have about we're delaying? The moment we got this, it was put on the agenda and we're going to vote tonight. I can't control what's going to happen when you, when you actually get the dispersment of money, but we will make it available to the school system. I just need you as educators to understand, there's no delay at this dais for anything that was requested. The moment we got the request, it was put on the agenda, it will be voted on tonight and this board, this council has already given you the indication that when they vote, they will move it forward. But that is, that is all that we can be responsible for as, for your pay is concerned. We don't control some of the things that I think you're contributing to us. I absolutely want you to get whatever you deserve as quickly as you deserve it. But the only thing this board can do is take the requests and make the funding available. Once we do that, it is, we're, it's entirely out of our hands what happens beyond that. And I hope that makes sense to you, but understand that there's, there's no delay on this side. We haven't told anybody we were going to delay anything, there's no indication we're going to delay anything. There's absolutely, positively no delay from this council about any pay that you're expecting. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next, the next speaker is Katrina Cassell. Katrina, are you here and you wish to come to speak, state your name and address, you will have five minutes. Councilman Tillage, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to say thank you to all the educators and members of the Portsmouth Public Schools that came out. Being a former bus driver, I did that during my time at school when I was attending ODU. I understand, I still stand with our educators, I still stand with you all still today. To the point that the city manager brought up in regards to the allocation of money, it has been confirmed by council tonight that there will be an affirmative vote for that agenda item to move forward. In addition to that, once we vote on that, it goes straight to the school board. The school board is the one that handles when and how much employees of the school division will get. On the city side, we do that for city employees. But our job tonight, and I think all, and I'm proud of my colleagues tonight for standing in the affirmative on this. And so I just want to once again thank you all for standing up for what you all believe in and knowing that I stand with you, I will continue to stand with you. And just thank you for taking your time out tonight to voice your concerns. And anytime y'all have any situations, you know, we're here to assist you. But being a former school board member, you also have great school board members who care about each and every one of you and we are able to work together as a team to get things done. So once again, I just thank you and I look forward to brighter futures and I look forward to you all continuing to help Portsmouth Schools shine brighter together. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Ms., is it Cassell? Castle, are you, are you prepared to come and speak ma'am? Please come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Well, I'm a little taller than the last person that was up here. Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, please talk into the mic so we can hear you.
I'm Ms. Castle.
Yes, ma'am.
I live at two-eight-five-eight Lambert Trail, which is right around the corner from that fancy new casino that gives us all that money.
Okay.
And I do have some prepared remarks, but I do want to address the concern that the city manager brought up about the funding and whether or not the teachers are confused, is what that sounded like. The budget is a conversation between the city council and the school board. So while I am not in disagreement that the amount, as Mr. Tillage shared with us, is decided by the school board, the budget that is set aside for our compensation, which occasionally does include those bonuses, is a conversation between the two of you. And the fact of the matter is that even if that proposal to delay came from the school board, it sat here in front of you and while you can assure us that you are all going to vote yes in a moment, we don't control that and your votes will be electronic and we won't be able to see them. And the fact is, we are all here tonight because we were concerned that that vote would not be a yes. And that in and of itself should be deeply concerning. Now, my credentials aren't nearly as impressive as many of the people who have gotten up here to speak tonight, but teachers don't often get the chance to talk about themselves, so let me introduce myself a little further. I've only been teaching in Portsmouth for a couple of years, but my tenure as a teacher extends over a decade. I hold an undergraduate degree and also a master's degree in the art of teaching as well as a postgraduate professional license. I also participate in a significant amount of professional development, professional learning communities, including not just the PEA, but also the VEA, the NEA, and the LMNOP, all of those organizations, and the National Council for Social Studies and the National Council for Economic Educators. And I am certified as an economic educator. I did that in my free time on one of those lovely unpaid forced vacations we get to take as ten-month employees. And if you are impressed by none of that, let me share something else. I make eleven more dollars a day. I make eleven more dollars a day than a brand-new teacher with zero years of experience and zero license here in Portsmouth. When we talk about education and compensation and shortages, these things often go hand in hand. We can talk about our bus drivers and substitutes, but increasingly lately, we talk about our teachers. And since I teach predominantly economics, I know a little bit about shortages. And as an educator, I know a little bit about finding the why. Some of us have spoken about that this evening, and we're often encouraged to remember it. I believe we all do understand what a shortage is, but I think we need to investigate the why. Shortages happen when a supply fails to meet demand. But why? Often, it has to do with cost, right? It costs too much to supply the quantity being demanded at the given price. So let me put that into relevant terms. It costs too much to teach at the current going rate. This must be true because despite the fact that, between the city council and the school board, teacher salaries for new teachers are higher than ever, and yet the shortages persist. Despite the fact that our new teacher bonuses are higher than they were in previous years, the shortages persist. Paying new teachers more isn't solving the problem, so why does the shortage persist? Because it costs too much to teach at the going rate. It's not that we can't get new teachers. It's that you can't keep the old ones. You can't fill the positions faster than they are being vacated. The shortage is persisting because veteran teachers won't, and you've not given them much reason to. While new teacher salaries keep going up, veteran salaries are stagnant. We have yet to see a release of the information that was the result of the salary study that cost several thousands, tens of thousands of dollars to produce. And while the new teachers gain thousands of dollars in bonuses, retention bonuses fall. In fact, the bonus that brought us all here this evening is less than half of the previous retention bonus that we received. And it is late in addition to that fact. And while our turnover rate might be winking at the state average, and the percentage of our teachers that hold no license and no advanced degrees climbs, our veteran teachers face more than just these miserable qualities of compensation. We have to reckon with supplies that don't arrive, class sizes that never stop growing, and the ever-present adage to do more with less. You can't replace us. That much is fairly obvious at this point. But you seem a little comfortable with acting like we are disposable. And this behavior with regards to retaining us, whether it is addressing the salary compensation or making us worry about whether our bonuses are coming, if at all, borders on contempt. Please put your money where your heart is and fix the staff schedule.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, if, if, if I could, on behalf of my colleagues, unfortunately, council is not responsible for the compensation of the teachers. That is a responsibility of the school board and what the superintendent determines. What we wanna convey to you very clearly is this body is an appropriating body of, of satisf- satisfying what the superintendent's statement or estimate of needs is. Every year, we have a meeting with our school board. And in that meeting, council is presented with a statement estimate of needs from the school board. I can assure you, I have been on this council for six years. Under my time here for six years, every year in which our superintendent has estimated his needs to this body for fiscal funding, we have satisfied that. So part of your concern, although I think is, is valid to some degree, this body doesn't do the things that you are suggesting. And, and I think it's a little unfair, really, because we work all hard to make sure. And as I shared to Chairman Potillo and I shared with our superintendent, we are one hundred percent in support of our schools. Ma'am, this body provided fifteen million dollars to our superintendent and our Portsmouth Public Schools, showing your value. At no time in history have we ever been able to do that. But the superintendent came to us as a body, and he said to us, "Council, this is what I need for my people to teach my students and provide the services," and we did that. We are committed, this body is committed, to working with each and every one of you to deliver the best results for our children. I can assure you of that. Thank you. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke.
All right. Thank you, mayor. Um, I, I just wanted to be able to applaud all of the educators who came out tonight to advocate for themselves. We advocate for you every day, but this is some bold moves for you to come, um, to prepare your speeches. And I'm glad that this council provided an opportunity for you to present the information. It was not just to say, to give us the bonuses and give it to us now. There was a lot of passion. There was a lot of content. There was a lot of information that has been shared in the messages that you have relayed. Ms. Hassel, uh, Castle, um, your, your speech was, was spot-on. Um, you relayed some information that I think that this council needs to hear. We do meet with our council, and we do, uh, uh, support our, uh, city, uh, school board with their request every year. And the funding that they're requesting, uh, we allocate to them. But the passion that you are expressing is something that I think that the council needs to hear. And when you said that you came up to this, uh, dais today and you mentioned that the perception was that there was gonna be a no, because, and I know you heard it because I heard the same thing. I heard the comments that there was gonna be a delay, that it was gonna be tabled, and nobody can discount that. But now we moving forward, and I'm glad that the presence of this body here tonight helped this council to decide that we won't delay, that we will move forward expeditiously with the information, with the request that you're asking. So we're doing our part. Um, our city manager is gonna meet with the superintendent of schools to go over the information in the ordinance to ensure that the, uh, information that's provided therein is accurate and that it will carry forth with that. But I applaud you all for being advocates for yourself because as an eight member, as an eight-year, tenured member of the Portsmouth City Council, I have always advocated for you. So I love you being here advocating for yourselves today.
Thank you. Um, our, our next, our next, our next speaker will be Mr. Matthew Hopson. Mr. Hopson, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Mr. Hopson, you not over here? Well, that concludes our speakers for this item. Council colleagues, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Second.
Is any additional discussion on this item? Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted five-zero.
Thank you. Our next item is item twenty-four-dash-three-one-three. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
Mayor, we might wanna take a little break to allow the audience to leave.
Okay, that's fine. We'll, we'll take a break for a couple of minutes. Uh, we'll reconvene and allow, or no, we'll just, if you wanna get up and use the restroom or whatever have you, you, you're welcome to do that. We'll reconvene at eight, eight oh-three. If everyone would please take your seats. We are on item twenty-four-dash-three-one-three. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance to reappropriate unexpendable funds in the amount of two million, three hundred eighty-four thousand, seven hundred sixty-four dollars from the FY two thousand and twenty-four Portsmouth Public Schools Food Services Fund Budget to the FY two thousand and twenty-five Portsmouth Public Schools Food Service Budget.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Is any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted five-zero.
Thank you. Item twenty-three, excuse me, twenty-four-dash-three-one-four. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the item we are considering?
An ordinance to reappropriate unexpendable funds in the amount of nineteen million, six hundred forty-seven thousand, six hundred eighty-eight dollars from the FY two thousand and twenty-four Portsmouth Public Schools Grant Fund Budget to the FY two thousand and twenty-five Portsmouth Public Schools Grant Fund Budget.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Any additional discussion? Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted five-zero.
Thank you. Item twenty-four-dash-three-one-five. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance to reappropriate unexpendable funds in the amount of two million, six hundred eighteen thousand, two hundred fifty-seven dollars from the FY two thousand and twenty-four Portsmouth Public Schools Risk Management Fund Budget to the FY two thousand and twenty-five Portsmouth Public Schools Risk Fund Budget.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted five-zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item twenty-four-dash-three-one-six. And would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance to reappropriate unexpendable funds in the amount of seven hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars from the FY two thousand and twenty-four Portsmouth Public Schools Text Book, Text Book Fund Budget to the FY two thousand and twenty-five Portsmouth Public Schools Text Book Fund Budget.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted five-zero.
Thank you, ma'am. We have, we have now come to the agenda item of new business, item twenty-four-dash-three-one-seven, Boards and Commissions. Vice Mayor, do we have any boards or commissions to report at this time?
Mayor, we do not.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item, item twenty-four-dash-three-one-eight, item submitted by council. Councilman Hugo? You have the floor, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So back to Boards and Commissions.
If we could go back for a moment, if I could interject. Give me one moment.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, I wanna follow up on an email that the clerk sent to us earlier today. Um, it's time for us to get the Crime and Gun Violence Task Force moving. Uh, I, uh, discussed with you that, uh, Councilman Tillage and I would like to work with the city manager as the coun- the council liaisons, the task force. Uh, and, uh, I'm asking for the consensus of council to assign us, uh, that, that responsibility.
Thank you, sir. You have heard the request from Councilman Hugo. He's asked for council, uh, to call for consensus to move forward with the crime task force. Do we have a consensus? Okay, well, Mr. Moody, do, did you wanna speak on that item?
No, you asked for consensus.
Well, I'll take that back and, and ask, if you all wanna speak on that item, then you have the floor, sir. You have the floor, sir. Did you wanna speak on that?
No, I, I was replying to your consensus, mayor.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I would like to speak too.
Okay. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, would you, uh, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, uh, mayor. Um, I, I did see the email, and the consensus never came through to council. Uh, this council has not had an opportunity to discuss, um, the appointments of the two persons. I didn't hear from any of my colleagues, so I think, uh, with two members still missing, uh, we still need to discuss that moving forth. And of course, we've been asking for this all year, ten months. And to make this move today without any discussion from council, um, I don't think that that would be fair. Um, so we need to have the discussion of all of us moving forward. We've been asking for this since January. We wanted to move forward with this and to, um, have two persons appointed with not even the conversation from them, the two, is not how we handle things.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. That's just further delay. Uh, I mean, you're talking about we haven't moved fast enough as a council, and I agree. But why delay it, uh, until, uh, November?
That's fair, sir. And we have a call for a consensus on the floor, so I would ask for a show of hands and a consensus of moving forward.
What would you like me to say, sir?
We have a consensus of four members of council. And so the, the, the request was to move, move forward with appointing those as, as liaisons to the commission. There was a consensus called for, uh, called for the consensus. There are four people who have agreed.
Okay.
Thank you. We need, we need a motion and a second to move that forward?
Move adoption. Second.
Would you please vote electronically?
You're voting electronically. Okay, this item is adopted five-zero.
Thank you. Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so, uh, two other items to raise this evening. Uh, first off, tomorrow evening at six PM, Chief Jenkins is hosting his quarterly Chiefs Forum over at two-oh-six High Street. And so, uh, if, if you, uh, are interested in hearing what the chief has to say about, uh, what's happening around the city, tomorrow night, six o'clock, is, uh, uh, gonna be a great opportunity to, to engage the chief. Secondly, uh, Veterans Day is upcoming, and so I wanna let, um, the community know that on November the eleventh, Veterans Day at eleven AM at High Street Landing, uh, we'll have our, uh, annual Veterans Day celebration. I'm pleased to announce that Admiral Jay Van, the Coast Guard Fifth District Commander, uh, will be our, uh, guest speaker, uh, for the Veterans Day celebration. Whether you're a veteran or not, uh, we invite you to come and join us to, uh, to celebrate the service of our vets on the eleventh of November at eleven AM. That's it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, I think about three things that are directed to the city manager. Is there an update on the Churchland Bridge, uh, opening and removing the drums? I think at, uh, the last meeting or a couple of meetings ago, we were waiting on some, uh, hardware, guardrails, but it seems to me that they've been installed. So is there another delay? Okay. And also Cedar Lane, uh, uh, travel that twice a day, and there's still manholes that are below grade. So my question is, what's the status of the rings? Okay, and also there, there's a park, uh, at the foot of the, uh, I guess the east side of the Churchland Bridge. I think, uh, it was named, still is, Point Pleasant, so I'm told. And, uh, that's been the staging area for the bridge construction. And some citizens have asked me if that's gonna be put back in its, uh, uh, pre-construction condition. And I understand there is also a grave site there and had a marker. Don't know what the status of that is, but, uh, if you could, uh, check on that one as well, Mr. Manager, that would, that would be great. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Um, now that we are moving forward with our commission that we asked for in January, um, asking about the RFP process on selecting Cities United or some other group, um, to work with this commission, do we have an update on that?
Mr. Manager, you have the floor.
Yes, ma'am. We've created an RFP for that. Uh, have not released it yet. But I'll share what I could, I had a, a previous version, and got some input, made some modifications to it. I'll share it with this, uh, uh, council one more time to make sure it actually states the things that you're looking for. But we're, we're almost ready to just release that and get that started.
Thank you. And I do want to share with everyone, you know that it is close to Halloween time and we have a lot of trunk or treats around the city, so I would encourage everyone to, as you participate, to watch out for the safety and security of all of our neighbors and friends and children. I do know also that this Friday, we have the Ghost Walk here in the city of Portsmouth, in Old Town Portsmouth. That is a heavily participated event. It's fun if you've never done the Ghost Walk. You get to hear about a lot of history in the city of Portsmouth, and it's an enjoyable time. The other thing I want to mention, we will be setting the return of General Lafayette here to the city of Portsmouth. For you historians, I believe General Lafayette was involved in helping to shape American as we are, America as we are today. And he visited and was in Portsmouth a long time ago. He's coming back, and so, we'll be celebrating General Lafayette for the full day on the 25th, this Friday. There'll be a number of activities taking place throughout the city. Please go to the city website to find out exactly where those activities are and how you can participate. That is all. And Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor.
You mentioned Halloween, Mayor, which maybe this goes to the manager. I've been asked at this city, what's the official celebration of the city regarding Halloween? Apparently, it's not on our website, so if you can see that that gets updated. I assume Halloween is on Thursday, so. And what do we know what those hours are? That's always a contention. Maybe our website can get that posted.
Yes, sir. I'll confer with our public safety group because I think sometimes they set a beginning and end time, but I confer with them and we'll advertise that on our website.
Great.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to acknowledge that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and so, I just want to encourage people to please take part in your health screenings. And to all the individuals who are survivors of breast cancer, we stand with you. And to the people that have lost loved ones due to breast cancer, we just, you know, we hope to one day find a cure for it and to find initiatives. And in cities such as Portsmouth where health disparities are great, very great, we need to make sure that we take keen interest in our health and make sure that we get screening. We follow up with our doctors and do the proactive approach so that we can catch things in a timely manner. Technology has come along way over the years, and by us being proactive with our own health, we're able to help save our life and the others' lives as well. So, let's just take this opportunity to think about the people that we've lost, stand with the people that are currently dealing with it and that are survivors, and then let's continue to take our own health forward and hopefully one day defeat that thing called breast cancer.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, Mayor. On a somber note, Portsmouth lost a former business owner, Mr. Dan Evans, this past week. Mr. Evans was also serving on our electoral board, and he's served on a number of boards and commissions through the years. He was certainly someone who had a lot of faith in the city of Portsmouth and contributed to our success for a number of years. So, our thoughts and prayers go out for Mr. Evans' family.
Thank you, sir, for sharing that information. That concludes our items submitted by council members. Our next item is twenty-four dash three one nine, report on pending items. Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. The report back has been provided to the full council. I ask that you take a look at that. If you have any questions or concern, please let me know, but otherwise, that information has been provided to the council already.
Thank you, Manager Carter. Our next item, item twenty-four dash three two zero. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement for non-agenda speakers?
City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light here beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first speaker tonight is Mr. Harold Carruthers III. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
How y'all doing today? My name is Harold Carruthers, 1616 Bella Fontaine Drive. Man, I was sitting back listening to them teachers talk, man, and that was hurtful, y'all. Like, that was destroying my heart. And it's crazy because, oh, man, that was real hurtful that they going through that. And, you know, as a person that got kids in this city, to know that they suffering and the kids suffering, and it seemed like that they were just pretty much really asking for y'all help, for real, for real. And I know y'all saying, well, it ain't too much we can do, but for real, for y'all ever heard of going an extra mile? It's funny, y'all sitting, y'all party with them every week. Y'all talk to the school board members every week. Why don't y'all bring this up? Like, this is y'all kids. This is y'all future that we got here, and if the kids don't have a future, then we don't have a future. The city don't have a future, and I am very upset about that. The teachers like, what about their money? Y'all want y'all money? And if they was in charge of getting y'all money, y'all would hold them accountable for that. So, I think y'all should hold the school board members accountable for that. Y'all have the issues and y'all got the power to do these things. I had to say something about that. Like, that destroyed my heart sitting there listening to them, for real, for real. Like, where y'all heart at? My heart was beating back there getting destroyed. They lady talking about two kids dying. That's on y'all. That's on y'all. Y'all know how many people died in shootings that happened this month? That's on y'all. Y'all need to contact the state police, contact the governor, get state police around here to help the chief. Look at his heart. Do you know his morality? What his morality going hand to deal with y'all? Y'all lack every day. All these officers that they don't have, and he got to deal with it. This man can't even sleep at night. That destroyed my heart. Got to sit there and look at him while he out here walking, trying to do his job, and it's hard. It's impossible for him to do his job because y'all not helping him. Y'all can do more than what y'all doing, and y'all don't care. And it's sick. Y'all job is to do policies, policies. If y'all see a policy not work, do another one. If y'all got to stand back every night, if y'all got to sleep up here to make sure this city gonna do right, that's what y'all need to do. Now, what did y'all do about Oliver Branch preschool? Did y'all talk to the school board about that? Because that's on y'all. That is on each and every one of y'all. What did y'all do about that? Now, I'm gonna change lanes right quick because I'm mad about that, but let's get to some real issues. Okay. All right. People in Peachtree got an issue with their water, right? The vegetation growing. I'm gonna give y'all, I'm gonna tell y'all what to do. In Virginia, this is one of the only states around here that y'all can, you know, we can use grass carp. Y'all can order 10 to 12 grass carp. These are fish, $10, $12 apiece, and put them in these ponds around here, and they will take care of vegetation. That's how you save money and you take care of issue. Another one, is y'all gonna get some of these sheriffs to help patrol this area? Because yesterday, well, the past couple of days, Old Town's been shot up. Who want to come do the Ghost Walk? All them people work hard to put this event together, and because of y'all lack of putting officers on the corner because we don't have enough and making the sheriff step up to what they can do, people are not gonna come. So, the first thing y'all need to do is issue a statement that y'all are gonna have that area secure so that them people can get their money and do what they trying to do. Have a great time, because other than that, they not gonna come. Do y'all understand that? Old Town is a beautiful area, but y'all got full shootings going on there and people dying that they can see on TV every day. So, instead of y'all acting like everything cool, y'all need to work and do policies to make sure that that area gonna be secure and let these people know that before they send their kids out in this area, that y'all gonna have it safe and secure, and y'all gonna do everything y'all can to make sure it's safe and secure. I'm so sick and tired of coming up here every two weeks to tell y'all how to do y'all job because y'all ain't got the heart to go and sit around and do it yourself. Y'all sit around and y'all do everything except your job. You do not have to, man, oh my God, I'm hot. Y'all just don't understand. You can go find policies. Just because you feel like it's not your job, the whole city is your job. If it's a problem in the city, you should go and try to do the best you can to make sure these problems get solved. Another thing, I am so sick and tired of these streets. People pay gas tax for a reason. Y'all need to get on these state senators and tell them, use that gas tax to pay for these streets, because no, the people in Portsmouth cannot afford another 1% or quarter percent tax. And another thing, y'all better get on them about that toll. I feel like that whole, this whole thing, y'all gonna put them teachers off right before election, that's a sucker move. Y'all know they need their money. Y'all know the city that y'all got going on, they can't afford it. It is difficult and it's mentally stressed, and one thing they shouldn't have to stress about is where they gonna get their money. So, now, I'm gonna tell each and every one of y'all one more time. Do your job.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Naona Byers. Ms. Byers? Excuse me? Ma'am, unfortunately, our rules won't allow that. You signed up as the speaker, so you have to come forward and speak.
Good evening, city council. My name is Naona Byers. I am the founder and CEO of ETSI Health Clinic located here in the city of Portsmouth. I am a Portsmouth resident. I was born and raised at Portsmouth General Hospital. I graduated from Wilson. I graduated from.
Please speak into the microphone.
I graduated from Wilson High School. Community leaders and fellow citizens, I'm here today to advocate for equal funding for nonprofit sexual health clinics. Comparable to the funding given to behavioral health clinics, sexual health and behavioral health lay hand in hand. Our sexual health being impacts our mental health and vice versa. Nonprofit sexual health clinics provides vital services that addresses the whole person, not just physical health. They offer comprehensive health education, HIV, STIs, testing, treatment, and prevention, as well as counseling for survivors of sexual assault and abuse. These services directly contributes to improve mental health outcomes, reduce anxiety, depression, and enhance overall well-being. But I want to bring to your attention a present concern that makes this funding crucial. Portsmouth currently holds the unfortunately distinct of having the highest syphilis rate in the seven cities. So, this is a public health crisis that demands our attention. Furthermore, our homeless population is sadly the highest population that's affected with syphilis. We opened on February the 12th, my apologies, February the 11th. Since we have been open, we tested over 180 people. Out of the 80 people, 29 people came up positive for syphilis in the city of Portsmouth who we have treated. But because we're underfunded, we cannot continue to provide treatment to clients that's coming up positive for syphilis. Virginia Department of Health do not fund us. We have a zero MOU contract with Virginia Department of Health. They only pay for our laboratory testing. When it comes to the clinic being funded, we get donations from other funders, but the donations are really not big to nothing. A majority of the funding I pay for myself because I believe in my, I believe in my community, and I believe in when it comes to HIV and syphilis, it's real within a black community, especially men of color, whether you straight or gay, black women, it affects the most. Portsmouth has the highest syphilis rate out of the seven cities, and there is no way why we shouldn't receive any type of funding from the city manager's office when we're doing this crucial work in the environment of Portsmouth. As dangerous, dangerous as Portsmouth is, my outreach workers are out there bringing people to the clinic to have them tested, and we don't get no funding from the city of Portsmouth. I have been reaching out, and it hurts me because we doing work that ain't nobody else gonna do. Our community, the black community, when it comes to getting tested, when it comes to knowing our status, when it comes to HIV, when it comes to syphilis, a lot of us is not educated on it. It affects us as a whole, and the clients that come in there look just like you all. They just don't sit in y'all seats. And I'm just asking for the city managers, for Portsmouth, to give us more funding so we could be able to serve our community and make sure that the syphilis rate don't continue to increase in the city of Portsmouth.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Wilda Battle. Ms. Battle, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, council, mayor, vice mayor, and all the councilmen. My name is Wilda Battle. I live at 928 Ann Street in Portsmouth. I am not a native of Portsmouth. I came to Portsmouth a little over 20 years ago. I liked it at first, but now I don't like Portsmouth at all. I know you got a lot on you, a lot on your mind, but I would like to bring some issues or concerns to your attention, and perhaps you can find out what can be done about it because I think it's an area that needs to be regulated. I've had conversations with business owners as well as seniors concerning this issue, and I think it's getting out of hand. My question, my first issue is concerning your pawn shops here, your businesses that you authorize to work, you know, serve the community here. Who governs them? Okay. I've had conversations, there's a lot of shady stuff going on in Portsmouth. There's no control of interest rates. People, seniors are being shafted. I've talked to owners, and they say they will tell me, this one is that, and this one is this, and this is, they're doing whatever they want to do. So, it's kind of unregulated, and I would like it to be investigated. I would like to know, is there anything that can be done to find out who regulates it and how can more rules be put on the books to control this out of hand situation in Portsmouth? The next issue I have is concerning the speed cameras in the Norcom area. I have neighbors that are being negatively impacted. They have children. They are the ones getting the tickets, lots of tickets, okay? The children need shoes, clothes, and shelter. I think there's a better way to do it. I don't know a lot about Portsmouth, but I'm listening and I'm hearing that the police force is understaffed or whatever. I think it would be better if there were officers to stop people and ticket people than a machine that just gives out multiple tickets. Those are two issues that I would like to address, and I thank you for your time. Y'all have a great evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Barry Randall Jenkins. Sir, you come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, members of council. Barry Randall Jenkins, the Brighton Printers Park section of Portsmouth. I'm joined tonight by two fellow officers of the Brighton Printers Park Civic League. Back in 2022, I was a part of the Bloomberg Harvard Crime Initiative study that was here in the city that our mayor, Shannon Glover, loved to promote and say how he was instrumental in bringing that to our city. The problem that we have, however, has been two years. We've since had a teacher shot on the street leaving Emily Spong about a year or so ago, and then on two days ago, we had a gentleman killed. The issue that I have is we've been complaining about Evergreen and Jefferson Avenue forever. I've even tried to get the city manager to come on board and let me show him certain parts of the town, and that was gonna be one of the areas because the seniors from that particular street and community, they constantly come into Brighton and Printers Park, and they're telling us about what's happening. It'd be 30, 40 people. If you guys remember some time ago when I came here and shared with you all how I received a phone call about how many people was out there shooting dice and doing a lot of stuff, and I saw a female police officer, and I asked her to go over there just to run them off. I said, you don't even have to get out your car, just, you know, flash your light, tell them move it on. And she kept going. I called at the time, which was our neat officer, which was Sergeant Washington, and he already knew what I was calling for, and he told me straight up, he's coming to handle it because the officer said that she was scared. And again, if the police are scared, then what do you all think? How do citizens feel? My issue, though, is we constantly are doing the same thing over and over. Doing that study, they talked about beautification. We still trying to get the playground area to. We still trying to get the playground area two years later in Prentice Park, taking care of all those blighted houses and things. I'm frustrated tonight because I get the phone calls, and you all see on the Facebook social media, Chief Jenkins and his crew, and a lot of the police officers, they are hard workers, so I don't want my comment to be misconstrued, but if it is, I don't care because I feel like at this point, we need to reset the whole police department. We're getting ready to reset this council in about two weeks, but what we have to do is understand that the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over, but expecting a different result. If we are so gung ho about this model of police, community policing, then you would think that we would have the police in the community before the crime happens. That way, the people feel comfortable talking to the officers. But it never fails, it's hard to get because we short-staffed. It might have funny, we short-staffed with police officers and staff, but then when it's time to do a reset walk, we got about 30 of them out there. So I'm a little, I'm just, I'm just blown to pieces. And I'm gonna appeal to Councilman Moody because one thing that we can definitely say about him, he's gonna be an even-kill guy, even when it was time to get rid of the former city manager, he did the right thing, but he didn't, he didn't just vote with a block how we are so accustomed to doing it. And when the mayor put me out, and Chief Jenkins came over and asked me to get on up and get out there, and he asked me, well Barry, how many times we gonna keep doing this? And my words to Chief Jenkins, and he can tell you, we gonna do it until we get it right. Because what, this ain't, this isn't school. We're not gonna just keep pushing people through because, you know, we can't, no, if you're not gonna do your job, you needs to go. So what I will say is this, as I sat here and I see the problem, first of all, we had a whole bunch of teachers come here tonight, and I'm a little shocked, but I guess Deandre and Mark Woodick is not here, so people are not speaking up. But a lot of untruth were told tonight. First and foremost, if we follow the model that the other six cities are doing, then what's left over automatically goes back to the school division. So furthermore, they should even have been in here from the beginning. If we gonna tell the truth and shame the devil, we was about to pass a budget, the mayor was, that was gonna be short, about $5 million, until somebody say, hold up, stop, stop, hold up. So we can't sit back and say things that, you know, that are untrue, that we support because our mayor called TCC to come in on a meeting because he didn't want Portsmouth Public School to have their own CTE school. In the words of Jay-Z, stop me when I'm lying, sir. So Mr. Carter, what I would say to you, because a lot of this is new to you, don't let Mr. Mayor get in your ear and have you speak about stuff that's not true, because this man is not for public education.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Kathleen Cullen. Ms. Cullen, if you would come forward and state your name and address. You have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Kathy Cullen. I live at 4413 Carlton Court in the Churchland section of Portsmouth. Good evening, City Manager Carter, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, honored members of the Portsmouth City Council, and City Attorney Graham Williams. I am the Vice President of the Old Town Business Association, representing 100 local businesses and several hundred employees of those businesses. I am here tonight at the request of OTBA President Andy Sutter, who is out of state at the time. I've never spoken at a city council meeting, and candidly, I don't feel very comfortable doing it, as I prefer to focus on the positive aspects of our great city of Portsmouth. But the recent series of violent incidents across our city and in the Old Town area, and the extremely high level of fear and concern this has generated among our local businesses, business communities, and their guests, all require the OTBA to bring these concerns to city government. Many of our businesses are in mixed-use buildings with safe, with residents living above or living next door. Our businesses, employees, guests, and visitors need to feel safe for commerce to thrive, and our residents need to feel safe for existing residents to remain here and for additional residential development to flourish. We are unified with the Old Town Civic League, who is also here tonight, in our shared concerns. I would like to thank Mayor Glover, Police Chief Jenkins, City Manager Carter, and other city officials for the efforts they have already made to reach out to the community and to bring information to the Business Association and the Civic League on the actions that they are already taking to address these issues. We are grateful for their efforts, their professionalism, and their partnership. We also realize that gun violence is a problem impacting not only our city, but cities and neighborhoods across Hampton Roads and across the United States. But we feel these problems have recently spiked in Portsmouth for a variety of reasons, perhaps a spillover from other cities with different enforcement policies and postures. Therefore, we're asking that the city council and the city government treat this as an emergency and divert the attention, resources, and support to the police department and all partner agencies that are needed to address this current emergency and to investigate local root causes of this violence. This includes an investigation of the reasons why crowds of people are coming to the downtown area in the early mornings to engage in, early morning hours, to engage in a variety of behaviors that contribute to this violence. Property damage, public drinking and drug use, loud noise from cars and motorcycles, stunt driving, street takeovers, litter, and general lawless behavior. And we ask that this investigation be followed by urgent all-of-government action to address those root causes. This may involve using zoning, health, noise, and other local code enforcement, zoning or property use permission changes, creation of special enhanced penalty zones, crime prevention through environmental design, problem-specific task forces, leveraging of other city, regional, state, and federal law enforcement agencies, engagement of federal prosecutors, or other creative solutions. We have a beautiful city, but we must make it feel safe and welcoming for our businesses to survive. This is not an Old Town specific problem. We recognize that this is an emergency that is impacting people and families and neighbors across, and neighborhoods across the city. We are all Portsmouth family, and a loss anywhere in our city hurts all of us, but this must be viewed as an emergency and prioritized as the emergency it is. We have specific concerns, suggestions, and recommendations that were brought to the OTBA by local businesses over the past days and weeks, but rather than air that list in this forum, we'd like to request an in-person meeting with the city manager and his staff as soon as possible to discuss what is possible, both here in Old Town and the city of Portsmouth. Thank you for hearing our concerns.
Thank you. Our next speaker, our next speaker is Mr. Tony Goodwin. Mr. Goodwin, if you come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, staff, and the rest of City Council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I don't believe, no one in this room is probably gonna guess what I'm gonna talk about. We've had two weekends specifically of sheer lawlessness all over our city, and most of it came to our back doors and front doors in these two last weekends. First of all, I'm not only a business owner in this city for over 25 years, as a business development person, a real estate agent, and have focused a lot of my efforts on High Street to revamp this city, and it's, I hope it shows to a lot of people in this room. But I also live in Parkview, which we took back in 1996 and turned it right around and did a lot of work with some of my neighbors here in this room together. We've obviously got a daughter that's grown up in the school system from Parkview Elementary all the way up now to Churchland High School as a senior. So as I said in one statement before, we are fully vested in making sure that this city is the best it possibly can be, in many ways, more than one. And recently adding, of course, a small general store on High Street to accommodate and also serve our community immediately around us, since the Dollar General has now since closed in July. But to see the activities that have happened in the last few weeks and beyond, before that, it is not only discouraging, but also very heartbreaking. And in the industry that I'm in, when there's blood in the water, the sharks do come. I can tell you without a shadow of a doubt, I'm sure some of my fellow colleagues and business owners are probably getting calls from agents and real estate agents from all over this community to say, hey, why don't you look at moving into another city because it's safer and gets better business? But I can tell you, if I got that phone call, they would probably know what my answer would be. We've got businesses down here that are on the second, third, and fourth generations. Some of you know that because you are some of those businesses. And to allow this type of lawlessness to happen, such as pits or car shows or whatever you want to call it that happened over on London Plaza two Saturdays ago, and motocross and the terror that they create up and down our High Street and chasing residents because they feel like they have the right to do so. But also just to have activity happening at 2:45 in the morning after all businesses, restaurants included, should be closed at 2 o'clock is very suspect, suspectful of things that are not proper. I'm a big property rights advocate. You know this. I come to this table and I, and I speak for the voice of the people that own property and want to own it, and there's a, there's a, the real estate professionals stand by a creed that everybody has the right to quiet enjoyment. That includes residences as well as commercial businesses. Allowing this domestic terrorism, which I would call is to our residences and businesses is going to be the death of this city, unfortunately. We've seen it happen once before, and probably two times before, but we could possibly see it happen again if this is continued to go on. As I vow to a few of you on council here tonight, I don't come up here just to moan and groan and say, you've got to do a better job, but I also come with suggestions and solutions to some of these problems. Remembering again, I'm a big property advocate for property rights. First and foremost, we've had a discussion here in this diaspora, at least events venues being an issue. So I would encourage you to place a moratorium on all new event and entertainment use applications until the police department can be staffed at a minimum of 80% of its core value. Declare and institute a sweep of zoning inspections by outside source, third-party inspectors of all existing event spaces and entertainment use facilities citywide until, and make sure they're doing the job they're supposed to. Declare a zoning amendment to require all event spaces and entertainment non-full-service restaurants use permits to be in GMU zoning at a minimum and not within 1,000 feet of a school, public or private daycare, or registered with the state. Declare a zoning amendment that will allow private clubs only to be operated in IAN zoning. We do that to breweries, we should be doing that to private clubs. Declare the Children's Museum to be a secondary and elementary school facility. May I have one minute or 30 seconds?
You have 30 seconds, sir.
Thank you, sir. To secondary and elementary school facility and install the signs that we have had recently installed over the summer as safe, gun-free, and drug-free school zones all over the city. Thank you very much to Mr. Wright and everyone on council for getting that done. An offer to all private, private preschools, daycares, and secondary and elementary private schools, the signs to be placed around their businesses as well because they do qualify. And let's work on the community enhancement to make this program work because we have so many, High Street could be protected from the waterfront all the way to Elma Avenue, given the fact that we have those facilities already in place. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Dr. William Dodson. State your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
Dr. William Dodson, Box 3269, Portsmouth, Virginia. Saturday night, Sunday night, this recent Sunday night was a doozy for the city. Four shootings, a car possibly with a mother and a child was destroyed, a couple was, and a couple was chased and assaulted, and death threatened to them by the downtown motorcycle gang. And early in the, early in the week, an elderly resident was shot through their wall. It's time to stop saying that we need another study. It's time to stop saying we need another committee. It's time to take action. A couple of people spoke tonight. I can't believe that I agreed with Mr. Cruthers about everything he said, and about the other people who are saying this is now an emergency situation. I'm asking you to declare this an emergency situation, talk to the governor, and declare a state of emergency so that we can get something done in here. I'm sorry, I'm shaking from an experience that I had this weekend. I'm still feeling some trauma from when, from the events that happened this weekend. I'm asking you to direct the city manager to increase police pay above all cities in the area with a delayed signing bonus. Although the police chief does not believe this is a primary motivator, it will become a primary motivator should be rectified, the situation with a Commonwealth attorney. Please direct the city manager also to find a way that he can speak with the police to arrest the downtown motorcycle gangs that are chasing all of our businesses away and terrorizing our pedestrians. I'm asking you to immediately pass code that allows the police to determine if it is more fruitful to auction or to destroy vehicles and other properties used in crime. If the criminals lose these vehicles that they're terrorizing us with, they won't have the money to replace them. And although there is no authority, finally, although there is no authority by council, council should demand that our Commonwealth attorney rectify the situation, the relationship they have with the police. Otherwise, we should be demanding publicly, every one of you should be up in the newspapers, up in the news, and demanding her resignation. She is the number one problem to crime in our city. It would also provide a hurdle to her further aspirations. I apologize, my insides are just rolling over. The person that was chased down High Street this weekend, the person that their life was threatened was me. I'm angry, I'm hurt, but I'm not gonna let it happen again. My wife was in the car when somebody threatened to kill us this weekend. I'm angry. I need you guys to do something now.
Our next speaker is Ms. Sheila James. Ms. James?
Good evening. My name is Sheila James. I have a business at 520 Middle Street. It is the Old Town Music Shop. We have clients that come from Chesapeake, clients that come from Suffolk, clients that come from Norfolk. They come to Old Town for quality music instruction. The events that have been happening this month are enough to tank our business. We, if we do not, if our clients do not feel safe coming to Old Town, that's the end for us. We keep hearing about how we are down 90 officers in the city. That's appalling to me. I don't understand how we got to the point where we're down 90 officers. Something needs to be restructured so that the chief has the ways and means to do what he needs to do to make this area safe. We're coming up on Ghost Walk, but the reality of it is, if our businesses can't sustain themselves because of fear of crime, Old Town's gonna become a ghost town. This needs to be an emergency situation. Our businesses can't handle it. Our residents should not be asleep in their bed at 3:00 AM, awakened to gunfire coming through the wall. If that woman did not have her husband there, she would have bled out and died. We cannot go to sleep at night and feel safe. If we cannot handle the crime situation in the city, then we need to either wave the white flag, ask- white flag, ask the government, the state government to come in, offer services, whether state police. I mean, at this point, I don't know. Send in the National Guard. We've got to do something. The fact that it has gotten this ridiculous and the fact that people want to continually say, well, we're down 90 officers, or there's crime everywhere, that's not acceptable to me. We should be able to go to sleep at night and not worry about bullets coming in through the doors. The ATVs, the street takeovers, the shooting just as terrorism so that we have to hear that? It's like Baghdad, it's ridiculous. We have to take action or we are going to join the notorious cities in America that are just out of control.
Our next speaker is Sharon Anderson. Ms. Anderson, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and those others on the dais. I come before you tonight with an urgent plea. The urgent plea is regarding the crime that continuously happens weekend over weekend. But I also bring, hopefully, a solution. What is the solution? I'm glad you asked. The solution is funding our police department's Real-Time Crime Center. And you asked, what is a Real-Time Crime Center? It is a police department unit that uses technology to monitor public spaces and records incidents. The Real-Time Crime Center will help our law enforcement agency and emergency responders respond to crimes more efficiently and effectively. This Real-Time Crime Center will empower our police department to take those different technologies such as closed-circuit television, license plate scanners, body cameras, drone cameras, gunshot detection, computer aid dispatched systems, facial recognition, cell phone tracking, and geolocation data. This is something that we have currently within our police department. I've heard that our police department is down so many officers, but this is something that we currently have present. And I'm asking you to find the money to assist our police department and our Chief of Police. The Real-Time Crime Center will help the police department by improving situational awareness, supporting crime prevention, streamlining investigations, and improving response time. We don't have the police officers that we need to put in every community, but we do have this crime, this Real-Time Crime Center. So I'm begging you, pleading with you, to support our Chief of Police. Give him whatever he needs to make sure we have this in place to help mitigate. It won't eradicate the crime issues, but it will help. So I ask you humbly to please consider giving our police department whatever he needs to make sure he can do what he needs to do to keep the city of Portsmouth and all of us safe. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Anderson, you don't have come back to the dais, but you know, every member on this council would jump through hoops for the police chief and the police officers. So support from here is not the question. And you're right, a lot of that technology we currently have, but we haven't had an update recently on what that's doing. I haven't heard of any arrests that's been made because of it. All the speakers tonight have used a couple of words. One is emergency, the other one is sense of urgency. And I agree with everyone. We cannot take this bump in crime as general business that somehow will get through it. I think we have to respond with a sense of urgency. So, and I know the city manager's been taking notes, and what I would like to hear back from the manager is, how can we, what resources are available for us as a city to respond with a sense of urgency and not tolerate the lawlessness that's been going on really all over the city? I know a lot of it occurred over the weekend and past weekends in Old Town, but it's not many areas of the city that have been left without some sort of a crime. So, Mr. Manager, I hope you can get back with a sense of urgency. I don't think we can wait for a committee, and I support the committee, but the committee's not going to be a short-term solution. What we need now is a response with a sense of urgency and address it as an emergency, whether it's calling for assistance from the state police, whatever law enforcement agency is available. But we need to respond. I agree, these reset walks, I'm not knocking them, but a reset walk is after the crime. We need to do something before the crime to keep these things from happening. I'm frustrated, just as my colleagues are, in hearing about these things going on. We cannot keep businesses in this city, we cannot keep residents in this city if we don't get our arms around what's happening. You know, I received a call from Mr. Dodson over the weekend, right after that it happened. I cannot imagine being chased by people threatening to kill you. That should not be happening in this city or any city. But my interest is in Portsmouth. We need to get our arms around it, and we need some solutions as a city, Mr. Manager. So I look forward to hearing from you and the chief on what our options are at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Vice Mayor Lucas Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Moody kind of touched on some of the same concerns that I had. We intently listened to all of these speakers tonight, and I see Mr. Dodson pacing the back of the floor because that's nerves. And I too had text conversations and then a personal call from Mr. Dodson as well. And someone in the hall during the recess to start this meeting back up showed me a viral video of this group that was terrorizing a car to a point where if you go through their roadblock, then they attack your car. And I know the chief is here now. I don't know if he has any comments or something, just to bring ease to the group for the listening audience that is here. You know, how do we handle this situation? I agree that it needs to be something urgently done. I mean, but if I had seen a roadblock and I'm trying to get to the food line or trying to get to the drugstore or something, I might have, you know, tooted the horn, can I get by or something? And I think that that is when the attack happens. So, you know, just to put us at ease, is, Mr. Manager, is there anything that the chief can tell us about what's going on now, tonight, so that people are here, hear something so that we just know how to defend or protect ourselves in this urgent moment?
Yes, I provided a handout to you just before the meeting started that kind of addressed some of the things that we, that has been discussed this evening. Absolutely, I would always tell everybody to always be vigilant when you're out and about, that's just for your own personal safety. I'm going to ask the chief if he will come forth and can give a brief synopsis of what's happening and some encouragement of how citizens can protect themselves through this time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon.
Good evening, Council Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. So obviously, I did provide to you a brief on the events of the, over the weekend. I also briefed the Civic League on last Thursday about some of the issues that have been occurring. Obviously, I stand here as angry as everybody else as to the things that are going on. I can assure you that as a police department, we're not taking this lightly at all. We're doing everything that we can within our powers to address these situations and using the technology that we have. In fact, the most recent homicide that took place on Jefferson Avenue, not only was the suspect vehicle identified using our LPR, but also the gunshot detection notified us of the shooting before any calls were made. So our technology advances that we brought into our city are working for us. As a matter of fact, the shooting incident that took place in the parking garage that injured our citizen, Ms. McManus, that vehicle was identified as well as using our LPR. So those things are playing dividends. As it relates to our street takeovers, this is an issue that has been affecting us for quite some time. We do what we can in trying to stay on top of these events. Oftentimes, they post that there will be or plan an event without actually giving a location. What they do is they actually drop the location where they do what they call is a meetup. So sometimes if you might ride down Airline or at Chesapeake Square where they also like to congregate, Greenbriar Mall, these other places, you may see a number of these vehicles that are just sitting there, what appears to be just a casual meeting of individuals showing off their vehicles. The issue later turns is when different individuals show up and those things turn. Many of the car clubs that are legitimate leave, and then what you're left with are the remnants of the chaos which we've seen played out several times. I too went to speak to Mr. Dodson on the evening after this, that situation happened, and he can share my sentiments and anger about this situation. You know, I think that oftentimes, and I'm not going to go into a lot of this because I would encourage everybody to come to the forum, but I also want to make sure that folks understand that our words have consequences. When you demonize your police department, when we talk about defunded police, when we talk about our disdain for police, do we wonder why we can't get enough officers to come and work in our city? Our words have consequences.
Amen.
And we are struggling because of those consequences. At what point are folks going to stand and support this police department and our efforts? We cannot erase the histories of old. We can only do the things that we talk about right now. Whether or not a reset walk works as a deterrent of crime, that's not what it's intended for. It is intended to reset the community after the tape goes. The things that we do beforehand are the things that we're trying to eradicate from this. These folks live in your community. Some of them are your neighbors. Pick the phone up and call and let us know about what's going on. Don't let us sit and fester and then wonder why something didn't happen. We need the community to get involved in what's going on. If you are surrounded by individuals that are on dirt bikes, and I will say this happens to be the first encounter I've ever heard in this city like that happening, but if you are surrounded, please get out of their way as best as you can and call us. Make sure that you communicate the urgency to police dispatch because the way that you communicate the situation determines on how that call is prioritized. A priority one call means that it's a violent situation. A call that is a barking dog or someone trespassing your property may be a priority five. That means you will not get the same level of response. Please make sure you understand that you communicate this sense of urgency when you are calling the police based on your situation. But don't call us if it's not urgent and it can wait because there are individuals whose situations are a lot more important, and we can get to you as soon as possible. I need to communicate that to you. But again, I won't belabor the point. We will go over some more of this tomorrow during my quarterly chief forum at 206 High Street. We'll start at 6 o'clock.
Stephanie Morales, we need to hear about Stephanie Morales.
Sir, sir, please. We can't have our birthday here in the chamber. Our next speaker, our next speaker is Chris Williams. Chris Williams, and I apologize, Mr. Williams, you weren't missed, I just didn't see your name initially. So you have the floor, sir.
You're good. Good evening. I just didn't want to go behind the chief. But good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and all the other esteemed, smart people in the room. My name is Chris Williams. I reside in Chesapeake, right? But hold up, hold up. I'm a native of Portsmouth. Now, I love Portsmouth. And when the news is on today and talking about all of the stuff that was going on, man, my wife was sitting in the den and she looked over me, she said, you going to that meeting tonight, right? And I said, yeah. I love Portsmouth. I don't think there's nobody in this room that love Portsmouth more than me. I think the sad thing is, is that y'all don't judge me, right? Don't judge me. I've been on the other side of crime, right? I've got 25 years of substance abuse disorder. I'm a 10-time convicted felon, right? But by the grace of God, I've been able to turn my life around, right? I'm 18 years clean, right? I'm over 20 years crime and drug-free, right? And I knew Chief Jenkins when he was just a little cop. I'm 60. I'm 60. I've been in Portsmouth all my life. I'm from downtown Portsmouth, Alabama. For those who know the history, I come from the rough part of the mountain. And I'm saying to her, you know, that Old Town is going through, right? But from where I come from and where I live, we've been going through that for a long time. We've been going through it for a long time, right? So, but whenever you're going through hardship and tribulations, it don't matter. Color don't matter, you know, gender don't matter. Whenever somebody dies in the city, everybody should be concerned. Public safety is not just a downtown agenda, right? It's not just a Dale's Home agenda. Public safety is public safety, right? And so I do agree, man, I ain't, listen, I'm a 10-time convicted felon. I have never I have never seen a police chief in the community like I see this guy. I don't seen all the police chiefs. I've been through all of them. I've been through all the Shels, Bill Watson, Sher Waters, Sher Moore, I know them all. And I'm telling you, we can't fire our way out of this, just like we can't police our way and arrest our way out of this. We can't fire our way. Every time the city of Portsmouth get to a point, we like, we got to find somebody to blame. Let's fire this one, let's fire that one. But the problem don't never get fixed. And so I got a suggestion. I got a suggestion, right? And here's my suggestion. You can't beat Tom Brady with a wicked quarterback. You can't beat Tom Brady with a wicked quarterback. And I researched the police pay today, and we had a, we had a good little bar with it when it comes to paying our police officer. Now, I'll say, let's tip the bar. Let's make it hard for them to leave us, and let's clean up our act. So when we do get policemen, they'll want to stay. I think that's the challenge. When we get them, can we keep them? And what are we doing to keep them? And let's stop earning out our dirty laundry in public.
Amen.
Because that right there, if I'm gonna fall off looking, I'm like, I don't want to go over there. So we got issues, but let's keep our issues behind closed doors. And let's fuss and fight in the kitchen and brain the city of Portsmouth out a good meal. And I think if we did that, and we just consider public safety, and we come out where anybody get killed, regardless of what part of town, I think that'll unify us a little bit more.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Our next speaker, Mr. Mark Goddard Yutrowski. Mr. Yutrowski, if you would come forward, state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
Mayor, Council, and other neighbors, even though I feel you owe me 15 minutes.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to forego my remarks in light of the tone and tenor of the conversation that's been, that's preceded me, and leave it at that level. I support the chief, and I support law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goddard Yutrowski. If there are no more items to discuss for the good of the order, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Please be safe, and have a good evening.